All right, it's all yours, Bill.
Okay, thank you. So again, my name is Bill Murray from Places Associates for planners, landscape architects, civil engineers and surveyors. We're working for and on behalf of the town through the project architect John McMillan, who's on the phone, from Kelo Beenek, their public safety architects. Also on the line, you can see his picture up there, he's muted, Anthony Deluzio, he's the town's owner's project manager from Colliers International. I thought I saw the police chief on somewhere as well. We met with you November 4th on 2020 to show you the site plans and to just preliminarily go through our site design. So what I thought I'd start with the architect explaining the building and then I'll go into some of the details on the site design if that's okay, ma'am.
All right, Bill, are you going to show the floor plans, relevations?
Yep, looking for them. I add them up. Oh, here we go. Let's see. No, it's hiding them. There we go. There we go.
All right, you don't happen to have the rendering, do you?
I do not.
Okay. If you want to, I can share my screen, I have the rendering.
That's not within my control to do.
I'll give you access, John, one second. You can stop sharing, Bill, and then John will take over. There you go.
Okay, can you see the screen?
Yes.
All right, so the Ashby Public Safety Building, our proposed project, is about a 9,000, 9,700 square foot addition to the existing fire station, which is about a 4,000 square foot structure. The design of the public safety facility is designed to fit within the community. It is a sort of traditional style. It is sited, in this particular case, it's vinyl sited. A couple different types of siding, clapboard and shake siding. Colors have not been determined yet, but in the rendering, you see a little bit of red, sort of in a lower range scope, and grays above, but that's not guaranteed to be the final color. It's very traditional, it's got traditional trim, painted cement board trim, asphalt shingle siding, typical six and 12 pitched roofs, gutters and downspouts. Some areas of the building, mostly adjoining the existing flat roof fire station, are themselves low sloped roofs. We do that just so we don't impose new snow loads on the existing structure, which would cause some structural cost to be accrued. The windows are traditional double hung vinyl clad or lumon clad windows, storefront doors. Again, sort of in a traditional style, we wanted this to fit within the overall community. There is a, and you can see a little bit of in the back, there will be, and we'll discuss, a communication tower, the size of it, and the actual construction of it is not part of this project yet. So it's not part of our permit. The facility itself, the design of the floor plan, which you can see here, colored kind of simplistically blue, police, yellow, common space, and the red tone is fire. So generally speaking, a police facility is a very secure area that requires a lot of privacy. The areas of the police here include administrative office space, squad room for the patrol officers, their locker spaces, some record storage, sergeant's office against the lobby. There's evidence and evidence processing and armory spaces. There is in the back of the facility, a Sallyport, which is a garage-like facility where you can drive a police cruiser in there and transport a prisoner undercover and in a secure environment into the booking area and into holding cells. There are two holding cells, booking space, another holding pen area, basically. On the fire side, there is a fire chief's office, so fire prevention office, which is against lobby. There are, there's a day room, which is a shared break space for both the police and fire area. There is a conference room, emergency operations center, which is also a shared facility between the police and fire. I didn't mention it, but there's an interview space also off the lobby, which is a shared space that if you have someone coming in and you want to have a quick meeting with them, you don't need to transport them through more secure areas of the building, you can have a meeting right here off the lobby, either a larger size in the conference room or a smaller size in this one or two person interview space. The remaining parts of the fire facility include storage spaces, fire officers, desk space, a shower, lavatory, there's a lavatory here too, and ambulance engine bay here, two bay new construction. This area here on the far left is the existing fire station. We are doing a minimal amount of work to that. We're saving and using all of the funds, most of the funds on the new addition. We're only doing work here, which is required by code on the existing fire stations such as sprinklers. The, I won't take it through the intricacies of the design, but the intent here is that the public would come in through the, into the lobby, and off the lobby, without going any further from the lobby, which is a secure space, they'd have access to the police administration, the police chief and any administrative assistant, and have access to a small meeting space. They would have access through a transaction window to the police quarter and any police officer arriving here when they call or doorbell to transaction and business with the police. There's similarly, there's a transaction window here to the fire prevention EMS office, so that someone having business with the fire department can actually do business through the window, through a transaction window such as fire permits. So we're basically trying to keep the whole public within the lobby space as much as we can. There is access to the fire quarter and also the larger conference room we mentioned. As I mentioned, it's about 9,000 square foot addition. There's about a 700 square foot garage, which is an alternate bid, which is basically if bids come in low enough that we can afford to build it, we would like to build a two bay garage. It's semi-critical to the police function. There's also another alternate, which is over this area, where when Bill explains the site plan a little bit better, there will be some cars parked here, where the patrol cars will be coming in through the back door, the staff entrance to the police facility. There's an alternate for a optional carport, which is a roof to go over this area, so that the police can park their cars under a roof, they don't have to keep the engine running to keep it clear of ice and snow in the wintertime and run the engines any longer. It's very convenient. Bill, did I hit all your points?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so I can figure out how to stop sharing.
Top center should be a little red tab.
Well, something happened to my Zoom window. Let me find it. Here we go. Thank you.
Okay, so Bill Murray again. So the site, as everybody knows, is the site of the existing fire station. It's located on 34.4 acres of land. The land is own residential commercial district. Eastern portions of the site are, fall within the Ashby Center Village overlay district, but none of our buildings are located in the overlay district. As John said, the addition is about 9,000 square feet. So here is the alternate garage. And when we say bid alternative, we put it out to bid, and if the bids come in where we hope they come in, then we'll be able to build it. If not, it will just be a grassed area. And then behind the station, as John had mentioned, there's a canopy cover. I think, John, this is similar to Aspernham, right?
Similar, yes.
Okay, so that you won't see that canopy cover from the street, but it will cover four parking spaces to the rear of the building. So let me just walk you very quickly through the, the site. We have seven public spaces, including a handicap accessible space in the front, the front parking lot. There'll be two signs here that say authorized entry only. This is the easterly drive. There are eight spaces for police staff parking, including an electric car charging station right there. There will be two parking spaces in front of the garage bay, plus if the garage is built, two parking spaces in the garage bay, and four more spaces for cruisers behind. There are three spaces behind the existing fire station where the chief and some of the employees can park. And then we have 14 spaces along the westerly side for call firemen, et cetera, et cetera. So the intent is the public will enter the easterly driveway and will not have ready access to the back of the building. And there will be no public access allowed from the fire apparatus in front of the fire station. And we have two new apparatus bays for an ambulance and a fire truck. So this will be restricted access, and then this bottleneck here will be restricted access. It is designed for two-way traffic around the building, so that a police car can actually exit the westerly or exit the easterly. So all the access aisles are 24 feet wide. Back here is a generator. The facility is served. Let me back up for the parking. We did provide a parking calculation using your zoning criteria, and we came up with 19 spaces required. But we are providing, I think it's 36 spaces site-wide, not including inside the garage or inside the Sallyport, site-wide. And the chiefs have indicated that that should be sufficient for their needs. So going to utilities, there is natural gas up in Main Street, and the building will principally be served heated and cooled with natural gas. There is a large generator back here, and that will have reserve power that's propane, two 2,000 gallon propane tanks that'll run the generator. Sometimes we use a belly tank with oil, but oil is a very fickle, diesel fuel is a fickle fuel, and propane is pretty standard, readily achievable, and isn't as fickle. Right now, this existing outbuilding has a trailer, a storage trailer behind it. We're going to expand that. One storage trailer for the police department, one storage trailer for the fire department. So we'll be putting that on a crushstone base. There's a dumpster located over in this area, so that the dumpster truck can come straight in, get straight access to that, back up and get out, we either go out the easterly drive toward or not. The front entrance is, and the sidewalks are completely accessible. So there will be a handicap space and unloading space here, and they'll be able to get straight into the building. By the nature of operations, a police and fire station does not need to be fully accessible for the police and fire staff, but we're, to the extent that we're able to do that, we're making it accessible. We're going to have signage. A permit will be required from MAST DOT for working on Main Street, Route 119, and they're going to mandate what the signage is, but we anticipate no parking signs along the front. The town will be putting in a sign in this general location, but it is not being permitted as part of this project, because it's going to be a town install item. One of the big things that we have on this site back here is an underground 30,000 gallon fire system. So what that's going to do is it's going to hold a substantial amount of water, and it's going to flow by gravity to a fire pump system that's located inside the building. So if the sprinklers go off, it's going to have more than 30,000 gallons of water to put out the fire. It is fed only partially from a new on-site well that's going to be drilled. The existing well is somewhere underneath the proposed building, so that we have to drill a new well over here. That well, really, the capacity of that well will only be to take care of evaporation in that tank. It won't be able to fill it, because it's only going to be five gallons a minute, and that's a 30,000 gallon tank. So what we've done is we've designed the water line to just take care of evaporation, and then the rest of the well will support the building and shouldn't be an issue. It's, the facility's going to have a brand-new sewage disposal system. We've already submitted that to the Shova Board of Health for review, got review comments, and we sent that back. And we'll be making more applications to the Board of Health relative to earth removal and some of, some of the other things within their jurisdiction. Let's see, what else do I have here? The radio tower will be here, not necessarily part of this project, but it's, we've integrally designed it, because it's a significant item, so we know where it's going to go. To talk about stormwater, the state has a criteria that says you shall not discharge stormwater onto a state roadway, even though currently the fire station discharges to a couple catch basins that are located right at the end of the apparatus bay. So we've designed this drainage system to comply with the DEP stormwater quality standards, which exceed the criteria in your site plan regulations. This westerly part of the site flows through a little basin here, which overflows towards the road. It also gets picked up and drained to a depression that'll be out in front of the public parking space, all of it moving easterly, and then ultimately it moves. Ultimately, we discharge to a dug ditch over in the northeast corner of the site. That dug ditch drains a little wetland that's to the north of our outlet, but it all drains to the fire pond down by the school. And I'm assuming that this dug ditch, and there's another one to the east, they both drain little pocket wetlands, and they all drain towards the school. So historically, somebody pretty clearly dug a ditch to enhance the recharge of the fire pond at the school. There is no height proposed on the site, but because the building is fully sprinkled, they really shouldn't have a need. And if the sprinkler goes off, they will be able to fill this tank up with one of their apparatus going back and forth and filling it. We've submitted to the conservation commission, and they closed their public hearing last week. So we anticipate unauthorized conditions for the proposed development. In fact, really, the only thing that's within their jurisdiction is the drainage system design and this outfall. That's the 100-foot buffer zone right there. So most of the site alterations are well outside the jurisdiction of the conservation commission. So that's really a descriptor of the site. There is minimal landscape proposed, very much like exists for the fire station. Everything that's disturbed will be planted with grass seed, lumen seed, and we have very few trees and shrubs, because we want to maintain the open nature and the ready appearance of the police station. While we understand that shading and those kind of things are important, we think that because this is a public safety facility, its openness and its apparent stature and nature and public safety status should be very apparent. We don't want to hide that behind trees and shrubs. And in addition, that's something else that the town has said that they, they will take a look at in, in a future phase. So then, just getting to a little bit more of the nitty-gritty, we have asked for some waivers from your site plan regulations. We've asked for a waiver for the provision of security and performance guarantee, and the reason we asked for that is that's required under state bidding law. The town will get a performance and security bond from the contractor as part of state bidding, so the town will already have that. And that will be in the control of the architect, the town manager, and the OPM, who will all be able to review and assert compliance with that. We've asked for a waiver of filing fees, because it is a town project submitted to another town entity. We've asked for a waiver of the review fee deposit. We are working in the best interests of the town, and if you choose to hire a review consultant, that, that is your purview, but we feel that we have demonstrated compliance with the town standards and criteria that are applicable. And some of the others are pretty meaningless. Location of water resource areas, we show that as an attachment in the application package, because we don't really show the entire site, we only show on these plans. We only show the areas of disturbance, and we don't show all 34.4, except on the cover sheet. So it's not really clear. The only water resource area is the Zone 1 to the elementary school well, which is something like 1,200 feet away. The Zone 1 is 1,200 feet away from the site. It does touch a portion of the 34.4 acres. We submitted, we did not submit as part of the original application of lighting plan, but we have since submitted that, and it is in here. There it is. So what the lighting plan simply shows is the intensity of the lighting that's proposed, and most of this lighting is proximal lighting, so that you can see up close to the building. But it's still pretty darn dark when you get down to the road, so that we're not shining in neighbors' eyes. But we are keeping the area of operation around the building well lit. So when an apparatus comes out at night, they'll have a moderately dark area, which is really what they need to do, acclimate to the darkness and, and drive off into the, the project in response. And so that's pretty much it. Tony, would you mind going over current status and bidding process?
Sure. So right now, we're working on permitting, as you described, with Conservation Planning Board, MAST DOT. Documents are being finalized, bid performance documents between John McMillan, Kelo Beenek, and the town's legal co-pleman and page. We expect to be out to bid later this month and have final bids in hand around the end of April. That would give the town 30 days that those bids are good, in which to secure contracts, get the performance bonds and payment bonds, as you mentioned, Bill, and have a contractor onboard and ready to start around the end of May.
And how long for construction?
12 months.
And that's pretty much our presentation. We would be happy to take questions.
Alan, you want to start up?
Okay, yeah, once I figured out how to unmute myself. What I, what I wanted to do was take care of those waivers first, so that if any are not approved, that everybody's aware of it. So I'm going to move that we waive Section 1.6, the, of the security and performance guarantee.
Sorry.
Alan moved, Jim seconded. Any discussion from the boards? All in favor? Terry?
Aye.
Jeannie, aye. Jim?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the second waiver requested is from Section 3.4, the filing fee. I'm going to move that we waive the filing fee.
Three second.
I think Tricia seconded. She beat you, Jim.
Okay.
Ready to vote? Terry?
Aye.
Jeannie, aye. Jim?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Bishop?
Aye.
Thank you.
And the third waiver requested was from Section 3.4.1, additional review fee deposits. And I'd ask that this be waived provisionally, presuming nothing comes up in the hearing that would require a review fee.
Second.
Jim beat you this time, Tricia.
That sounds good.
I think provisional makes sense. Terry?
Aye.
Aye. Jeannie, aye. Jim?
Aye.
Alan?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, the fourth waiver requested is Section 4.2, Site Plan Contents, and they're asking that we waive the requirement for the location of water resource protection areas. And the second was the lighting plan. They did submit a lighting plan, so I don't think we need to waive that one. So a waiver from Section 4.2, Site Plan Contents, location of water resource protection areas.
All right.
Jim, I'm waiting on you.
She was staying real quiet on that one. Any other discussion? Terry?
Aye.
Jeannie, aye. Jim?
Aye, again.
Alan?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye.
Thank you.
And the fifth and last waiver request was Section 6.2, from landscaping. And they've, I guess apparently there is a plan for landscaping.
There is. I can get it.
And so do we need this waiver?
We do, because it, I guess it's referring to parking screening.
There we go.
And we won't have landscaping to screen the parking, which is a...
And we have bought a residential use. They have an existing, over here, they have an existing evergreen hedge, and they're about 200 feet away. So we just have a few street trees along the front, so that we are, you know, keeping the intent of the bylaw and some screening back here. But the goal is somebody coming along can readily see that it is a public safety facility and see how to get to it and get in. And we don't want to put street trees along the whole frontage of the site. We just want a, a little bit. So the bottom of the page is south. So we will be creating some shade to the front of the site, but the landscaping is in fact pretty minimal.
Are you removing any trees?
We are, yeah, we're removing some trees over here on the tree line.
Sorry, I don't see your cursor.
Okay, on the western side, to the left of the fire station, you can see, you can see a little cloud line right above the tree that's the farthest left. So we're moving a very small area of those scurvy woods that are over there, because we're bringing in our utilities and pushing the parking over in that area. Other than that, no.
Okay, so, so the residents to the east, that's within 200 feet, you're not removing any trees along the eastern side? Okay.
No, we are not.
Um, back where the septic system is going to go, I know that's not exactly landscaping, but that's going to have to be treated in some way. My memory is the most of the rest of this area is, used to be, would be fields, right?
Correct. So everything that's not paved or stabilized with what I call permanent stabilization will be loaned and seeded.
Okay.
And it will be hydroseeded. So we've done a minimum of six inches of loan. We require that the loan be tested to meet agricultural standards, so that we're not putting too much fertilizer down if it doesn't need it. And then it will be hydroseeded. And we've got four different hydroseed blends. We've got manicured lawn. We've got steep slopes, which is a type of grass and ground cover that will grow up and not grow tall. We've got field mix, and we've got a basin mix that grows in the bottom of the basin, so that we're, we're keeping the manicured lawn areas pretty much around the building and to the front of the building. And then everything to the sides and to the back will be slope mix, field mix, and then the drainage basin has a very special mix that can take inundation and drying out, inundation and drying out.
I was wondering about, in the pollinators and doing, doing something with, with the non-manicured area that would encourage insect well-being, and I was... And I was, and I was thinking about milkweed and butterfly weed and some of the plants that bring bugs and butterflies. Is that a, something that is feasible, reasonable, or possible?
It is, um, you know, a lot of that back area, I was just looking to see if I had that seed mix on there.
You do have a wildflower mix actually on there, I think.
Well, I'm a beekeeper, so I'm, I'm very much into that anyway. Yeah, the, the, the slope mix will be a, it has things like crown betch, which is a legume that has amazing amount of flowers. And it becomes very dense. And the beauty of it is you mow it once a year, weed whack it or something along those lines. So that's our slope mix. Yeah, here we go. Uh, the conservation mix is got white clover and Ladino clover. Uh, here's the wildflower mix by New England Wetland Plants for the, for uh, other areas of the site. So we specify those things already as part of the overall project.
Great. Thank you. And I guess the milkweed will just arrive on its own, right?
Yeah, the, it's not a big slope plant and it might grow in the, the field, but if they mow it or they hay it, you're gonna lose the, the milkweed will be intermittent as it is today.
Yeah. The area directly over the septic, that gets treated somewhat differently. I, am I right or not?
No, grass.
Not a Okay.
It'll look like a helicopter landing pad, but we really, the only thing we can't allow is any kind of shrubbery to grow there, or we don't want that, any kind of shrubbery to go there. We don't want trees, we don't want shrubs, we want it to be mowed on a regular basis.
Yeah, yeah.
Does this layout allow for helicopter landing still?
It doesn't prohibit it, but it doesn't encourage it either. So I've been doing public safety facilities for a very long time. And the criteria for a formal landing space would mean that we, we'd have to start looking at stabilized uh, surfaces and access routes and things like that. Uh, it's a good question, but the, the short answer is no, it doesn't formally accommodate it. But it leads me to a point that I should have made earlier is one of the design criteria that we were given, our easterly driveway is capable of going straight back because the town owns, I mean, we're disturbing such a small footprint. We're disturbing something like three point three percent of the entire thirty four acre site and the town owns a parcel behind that's as big. Uh, so this design enables the town to extend a driveway to the remaining backland it, for future use. So if the town decides it wants a different building or a playfield or something back there, this design won't prohibit that kind of construction in the future.
So currently, my understanding is that we can have, you know, uh, med flight land at the site. Do we have similar sufficient flat area in which, in an emergency that could occur? Do we know? Or I don't, I don't know. I, maybe that's a question for
Yeah.
an EMS.
Yeah, I defer that to the chief. Um, I don't know the answer. Uh, I, the short answer is yes, but we do, because we're doing something called country drainage, and you guys can't see my cursor, which is kind of bad. We have a Yep.
Sorry to interrupt. Uh, Chief Bustle is on if you want him to address that.
I would like Chief Bustle to address that.
There you go.
Hi, good evening. Just waiting my turn. Once we see a build out of the the area, there, there should be plenty of space for the helicopter to land. They don't really take up a lot of area in this sufficient clearing. They, they always worry about the tree line and everything. So once we're done with this, what we do is we have, they come out and they actually GPS the, the site because they try, they, they land using all the technology nowadays. So we will be able to hopefully find a spot that we will be able to land a helicopter, but with, we gotta kind of let this build itself out before we try to place that particular spot at this time. But I feel we should be able to, especially where it doesn't really take up a big space, believe it or not, to do it.
So u- ultimately, is it their decision as to whether or not they are comfortable doing it? Is that correct?
Some of that will be at the end. That's why we'll introduce them to the finished site and they will help us probably locate a spot that would be sufficient for, for, for them to be able to land.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
So I think we have a motion to waive the about it or no?
Yeah, we were looking at the landscape plan waiver request. And the request, and correct me if I'm wrong, is really to modify some of the requirements in the regulations so that you're not screening parking and so forth. Is that correct?
That is.
So I, the way I'm thinking is this doesn't need to be waived. That if the plan is approved with the landscaping as shown, then it would be approved that way. And if the board wanted to require something different, uh, they would express that. So I don't think we need to waive the landscaping section.
Anyone disagree?
I don't know, Alan. I'm going back to section six point two to see what it says.
I guess you're not that sick.
Not sick, just in pain.
We got any music?
Uh, yeah, Alan, I think I agree with you. I, I don't think they need to um, waive that one. Because it just says it shall be suitably landscaped.
Does uh, everybody in agreement with that? We'll just let that ride?
Works for me.
That's fine.
Or are you waiving, or are you asking for a waiver of the percentage?
Yes.
For the five percent. What is the percentage of landscaping that you have now for the parking lot?
Oh. Less than five percent.
Okay, so then you need the waiver.
Okay, Tricia, so can you make the motion what we're specifically waiving?
Sure. Uh, uh, well, okay, so do we need them to modify their waiver request?
Well, it's whatever you, you move.
Tricia, I think what you can do is um, ask them, uh, tell them what we will waive.
Well, so, yeah, so we need to waive section six point two point four regarding such landscaped areas shall not be less an area than five percent of the total area of the parking lot. Et cetera, et cetera. Um, my, my quandary here is that we, section one point five point two talks about that the waivers need to be in written request form. Can I just modify their waiver request?
Oh yeah, certainly.
Okay, so um, I move to approve the waiver request to the requirement to have five percent of the total area of parking, landscape be total, five percent of the total area of the parking lot.
Second.
Uh, ready to vote? Terry? Actually, can you just repeat that one more time? Just for me to grab it. Trish?
Sure, sure. Um, so um, regarding section six point two point four of the rules and regulations, I move to allow a waiver to um, less than five percent of the total area of the parking lot regarding landscaped areas.
Okay.
Aye.
Oh, sorry, Jim.
Aye.
Jeannie? Aye. Alan?
Aye.
Tricia?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is the pa, is the park, sorry, is the parking lot paved? Is the whole parking lot paved?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
There we go. Yes, everything, everything's paved. Uh, when we came in front of you in November, opposite the spaces on the easterly side, we were gonna have some overflow reinforced grass pavers, but that got taken out of the project because it was just too expensive and it wasn't needed.
Okay.
So I think we've reached a stage where planning board members can ask any question.
Well, hold on. Um, sorry, as, as long as we're on waivers, um, Bill, correct? Is that, am I, okay. Um, so this is a question for you. Do you need any additional waivers, do you think?
Not that I'm aware of, no.
Okay, because I think you do. Um, so, so section six point one of the rules and regulations talks about stormwater. Um, specifically, it talks about our requirement, which is our requirement is that we need basically we need AutoCAD run at a twenty five year design storm, which is obviously not consistent with Mass DEP stormwater standards, which you ran at the two year, the ten year, and the hundred year. So I think we need a waiver to this.
I, I read the regulations as a ten year storm.
Terry, can you pull up the?
So, so I've got it here, Bill. Uh, it's six point one stormwater runoff for all sites. The peak rate of stormwater runoff from the development shall not exceed the rate existing prior to new construction based on a twenty five year designed storm.
Okay. I saw ten year in your regulations. My bad.
That's okay. So what I, what I think we need you to do is we need to just, we need you to just submit a waiver to section six point one.
Okay.
For us to accept the two, the ten and a hundred year.
Or um, I can have my engineers run the twenty five and give you the results of that.
Uh, whichever is easier for you.
Yeah, well, writing the letters easier.
Okay.
I, I, I mean, I, I see no reason why they would need to run the twenty five year design storm. I mean, the two, the ten and the hundred are pretty consistent with it's consistent with the mass stormwater standards, right? So I, that's sufficient. I don't know why we would accept, we would require something beyond what Mass DEP requires.
Okay. I will do that.
Great.
Anything else, Trish?
I didn't know. Yeah, that's it, for waivers.
Okay, thank you. Um, so this is the moment then the board can ask any questions? Um, I just wanted, I didn't say it clearly in the beginning, so I'll just remind us that our general scope is traffic drainage, lighting, public health and safety, impact on municipal services.
And we did submit a pretty comprehensive um, project narrative to address each and every one of those items.
You did, actually. Thank you. Why don't we stop the sharing? And then I can see everybody on the screen because we can open this up to community questions.
Well, I've, I've got a few questions, Jeannie.
Oh, I didn't hear you.
I do too, Jeannie.
Okay, then. I'm not opening it up to the community, sorry. Planning board may ask some questions. Alan, Tricia, go for it.
Alan, you can go first.
Uh, okay, the first question, you, you said you were gonna end up with an excess of thirty eight hundred cubic yards of soil material?
Yeah.
Uh, do you have a location where you're going to, you said you
Thank you for mentioning that. So that has changed since we submitted to you. Uh, the building committee originally told us that we were going to keep it on site and spread it. And that material, by the way, does not include loan. That we'll get to loan in a bit. Um, but now the town will, it, it's in the contract documents that the town will receive that material at the DPW. And the contractor will haul the surplus unrequired material to the DPW where they will process it and use it in various fashions. Likewise, loan is a very valuable item and we don't allow the contractor to remove the loan until we have determined that what is remaining on the site is in fact surplus to need. I don't want a guy hauling loan off the site and then buying loan to bring it back on the site. So, but the same, same deal is going on with the loan. If there is surplus loan, then we'll be able to determine that pretty quickly. We know the square footage of disturbance. That will also be hauled by the contractor as part of base bid to the DPW yard where they're going to get it screened and they're gonna, the town's gonna utilize the material in the way that they choose to do it. So that it, that is a change since we submitted the plan. Uh, and we modified that in front of the Conservation Commission as well.
So all excess soil materials will be hauled to the DPW?
All excess clean soil materials. If there's debris or any of that, that will be hauled away as unsuitable materials. Yeah.
Okay.
And likewise, fill, we're gonna have to have some specialized fill, structural fill, those kind of things. All of that has to be virgin material. We don't allow them to man make uh, those kind of materials. So they'll be coming from clean pits and that will be hauled into the site.
Yeah, you, you've got some coming in.
Yep.
Okay, uh, uh, one thing I wanted to mention, and, and I forgot to, I should have mentioned it first, when you uh, mentioned the zoning district as being the residential commercial. Part of the property is in residential commercial and part is in residential agricultural. Uh, just like part is in the village overlay district. The residential commercial is uh, is the same on that side of the street as the village overlay district.
Right.
So I think that the portion you're building in is actually in residential agriculture. I don't see that, that actually affects the application. Um, let's see.
Right, it's allowed use in all, in all zoning districts.
Yeah, yeah. Uh, so the other one was about parking spaces. I think you answered that. You said you'd be providing thirty six instead of the nineteen minimal.
Right, Alan, quick question for you on that. Do they need anything for the additional spaces or do we just, we just stipulate the minimum?
Well, well, what they used is our requirements to calculate the minimum. But uh, it, it's a unique use in that you got the volunteer fire department. You need a bunch of additional spaces for the volunteers when they respond to a call.
But we don't specifically need to approve the additional spaces above the calculated number?
No, I think those are minimal.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Spaces. Um, let's see, and you filed with the Conservation Commission and that's in process, apparently. The other question I had was signage on Main Street. The police station is currently located in, in a place where it's completely not obvious.
Right.
And over the years, we've had a couple incidences with patrol cars entering Main Street. And uh, I think there's been a couple collisions over the years. I just wondered if there were gonna be any signage on Main Street warning uh, ordinary traffic that they're approaching
Yeah.
of fire station, police station complex.
Yeah, it's, um, so it's defined through Mass DOT. It's called the Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, MUTCD. So four hundred feet in the easterly direction and four hundred feet in the westerly direction. direction, there will be those diamond-shaped warning signs. One will have a fire truck on it, and the other will have a police car on it. It's pictograph, so it doesn't actually say fire station ahead. It simply shows a fire truck and a police truck in both directions. So Mass DOT is where we have submitted to them, and they're going to, I don't know if they're going to require, but we're going to specify that those be installed 400 feet on either side, not on utility poles, but on standard Mass DOT poles to warn of the presence of the police station and the fire station ahead.
Okay, so it'll just be signage? There'll be no lit signs or?
Right.
Signals or anything? Okay.
So the, the town in the future wants to do a message board sign that says Public Safety Facility, and then can do public service announcements, but that's not part of the application that we're making to you. The town's going to pursue that at a future date.
Okay. Then I wanted to move on to drainage. And drainage area 16S has the long pipe that drains to the north. And could you talk about the inlet for that pipe, the diameter of the pipe and the discharge?
So you're talking this, this system that flows to the outfall up here?
That's correct.
Okay. So yeah, there is a, we have a subdrain because, first off, the drainage system design assumes that groundwater is two to three feet below finished grade, because we did soil testing pretty much across the whole site, and that's, the soils that you have out there have seasonally high perch water tables. So the drainage basins are big and flat. They're not these deep, deep holes. They're big and flat because we have to just assume that we really can't recharge. So we have a drainage outlet structure. Let's see if I can find that. Nope. That didn't do it. My my Zoom controls are blocking my access. There we go. That's the lighting. What should the man? So it is a, it's this structure right here. The stormwater outlet structure. So it has a subdrain, and the requirement of stormwater regulations say that the basin has to drain dry within 72 hours. So we have a subdrain in there. It's got a ball, a plastic ball valve, so we can close it off if for some reason we need to. It has a 12-inch outlet, and then a landscape catch basin. Even though it shows a flat basin, it's got a landscape catch basin, which is a beehive on the top. And I don't honestly recall what the perforations are, but I think they're four-inch diameter staggered perforations on the side of the structure. So we're slowly letting, as the water builds up, it goes through a four-inch hole to the outlet pipe, which is 12-inch PVC HDP. And then there's another orifice, and then there's another orifice. So as the water builds up, we take more water out, because that's what happens during bigger storms. You want to discharge. So that's what that structure is. The drainage design, I'm going to go up. That's my grading plan. I went a little too far. Okay. No. Apologize. My computer wants to bounce it all over the place. Okay. So we have a swale behind the facility that picks up the surface water. So again, we're doing the country drainage. We're trying not to do a lot of catch basins. The front parking lot drains to a ditch in the front, which then flows to the east. And we have two basins. We have basin one, which catches roof drainage and the majority of the back of the site. It captures it, and then it flows from an inlet pipe to the second basin, which has a constructed wetland. And what the constructed wetland does is it polishes the runoff. The second basin also picks up the front of the site, the front parking lot and some of the apparatus space, because we have slot drains right at the right-of-way line to pick up the sheet flow and then direct it to our basins. And then ultimately, it flows out and down. So the stormwater system that we have has four bays, and the way we've designed this is it exceeds the DEP standards for treating runoff prior to discharge, because ultimately it discharges to Trapall Brook, and Trapall Brook is considered outstanding resource water, even though the fire pond and the parking lot from the school drains to the fire pond. So what, under the DEP water quality standards, you treat for something called total suspended solids, and they have a criteria for retention time and how much water gets to it. And that criteria is based on, normally based on a half inch of water hits this impervious area of the site and discharges to the basin. For outstanding resource water, we double that, and we say an inch of water hits the site, and that water is allowed to slowly drain into the basins through what we call armored dike, which is essentially just a stone-filled weir or a stone-filled berm. So we capture all those total suspended solids, which actually therefore capture an awful lot of the heavy metals, the sediments, and things like that to treat the water. And the constructed wetland then picks up nutrients and captures even more bad things, heavy metals and things like that, before the discharge goes all the way out. So we exceed the DEP stormwater standards for discharge to a sensitive area with this drainage system design.
Okay, and that constructed wetland is in the, the drainage area right at the front of the property on the east?
Right, yeah. And, and you see those all the time. It's going to be cattails. A lot of things will naturalize, but we're going to introduce, there are plants that can take drying out and then being fully inundated. Their roots capture and filter a lot, and every few years, you're going to need to go in and cut them down to, you know, 10, 12 inches in height and get rid of the greenery, because that's your captured nutrient load, and you want to make it go away. And that can go, you know, ideally, that should be composted and used somewhere else.
Okay, and I, I noticed in your drainage structure drawing, there appeared to be no sump to that drainage structure. So I presume all the solids have been taken out by the time the water reaches the structure?
Yeah, we, we've really polished the water by the time it reaches that outlet structure. The answer is yes.
Okay.
It's, it is, the, the actual outlet structure is not part of the treatment train. It's simply a hydraulic conveyance. So there's, there's no credit for it.
Okay. And is that, on this plan, is that the property line you're showing right next to the, the drainage there?
Yeah, the big black line to the right.
The big, big black line. Okay. And so are you going to be disturbing those trees that run along the property line there?
We aren't, no. There's, the grading goes within about four feet of them, of the drip edge. But no, we're not going to be disturbing those trees at all.
Okay. And then one question in your post-development analysis point one, you increased the 100-year storm runoff by 1.1 cubic feet per second?
So the standard is that you shall not contribute to downstream flooding. And with those kind of a flows, that's what we consider de minimis. It's within the accuracy of our ability to calculate for the 100-year storm. So we're not, we're, we're, number one, we're allowed to do that. Number two, it, it, we're not that accurate in our calculations to be able to say within one CFS that this is what will happen. So that's why we don't really see a red flag from that.
Well, what I'm hearing you say is it could be better or it could be worse.
Yeah, although we've taken some pretty conservative design assumptions in preparing this. So I'm, it, the, the likelihood is it will be better, because we assume in the design of this drainage system that there is no recharge to the local groundwater table. And even though groundwater shallow, there's going to be some recharge, but we just assumed that there is not. So a lot of our assumptions are, are pretty on the conservative side for the drainage system design.
Yeah, my, my concern was it's draining, you know, directly onto municipal property and the potential for increasing the flooding in the, in that area and in the center of town.
Well, one CFS is, considering the tributary area to that pocket wetland is probably eight or nine acres, and it flows through that stream. The one CFS, when it blends in, is, is not, it's not statistically even highly within a percentage.
Okay, so you think it's tiny compared to the total drainage into that wetland?
Right, right. And I honestly think that our flows will be less than what we calculated, and you probably won't, it won't actually materialize, but we're not going to, we're not going to play with the numbers. We're just going to make sure that we represent, so another engineer can review it and say that that's a reasonable thing to do.
Okay, and one thing I noticed in the overall plan was this system's going to require some maintenance?
Yeah.
And I'm wondering what assurance we can get from the owner that it will actually be maintained, given the town's history on maintenance?
Well, I can tell you that that was a big topic of conversation with the Conservation Commission as well. Under the DEP stormwater standards, we're required to submit this drainage system operation and maintenance plan. And the maintenance really isn't that burdensome because we are doing the, the country drainage, but you do have to clean catch basins. We have four bays, which are essentially silt collection devices at the front of the basin. And we like drainage basins better than below-grade recharge systems, because you can see when they're starting to fill up and fail, as opposed to somebody trying to recharge, and then it just disappears from my eye and sight. But the short answer is, it is a requirement of the DEP stormwater quality standards, and Conservation Commission was also concerned about that. And I'm quite sure that they're going to make a maintenance provision in their orders, and we have, I have no issue. And I would encourage the planning board to put something in your conditions, because the only way this thing functions as designed is if it's ma- maintained on a regular basis. And that's all spelled out on this plan. What the frequency is, what, what you need to do, and those kind of things.
Okay, if I could just pursue that a little further, if the fire chief and the police chief are on board, I mean, essentially, it's going to be their budgets that are going to look at the maintenance, if they could address that question.
Hi, Mike Bustle. Well, not knowing what that maintenance really is and what it costs, it would be something we would have to propose to the town to put into someone's budget. And I would assume it would probably be the highway doing the work. So would have to have conversations with, you know, all parties that are involved in any type of maintenance, because I haven't read that, any of that maintenance that's recommended for this system.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, go ahead, Bill.
Well, the maintenance is when the, the four bays silt up, when they reach to a depth of 12 to 18 inches, they need to be cleaned out, and usually do that with a backhoe. The drainage basins need to be mowed at least twice a year to keep trees and shrubs from growing in them and then undermining the berms. And as I said, probably once a year, somebody's going to come in and chop down the, the constructed wetlands. We have a couple of catch basins that will have to be cleaned on a regular basis. So it's not that burdensome. We are going to have to file with the federal government for a SWIP, which is a Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan, which is going to have even more specific requirements for maintenance in it. And because we're tributary to Trapall Brook, we're also going to be filing with the Mass DEP for a stormwater permit as well. And all of those, the, the same filings for the EPA and the DEP, but they all, again, have a book that says this is what you need to do. And that book is a little bit more specific than even this plan.
Okay, that, that's all I have.
Just a quick question. Alan, you'd mentioned with it being an RA, there's no impact, right? As opposed to RC, from what I saw?
No, I don't believe there's any, any change.
I think the only thing that I saw was something about a landscape buffer, but I think we're fine there. Lighting were good. Signage, you had mentioned, Bill. Signage for traffic. For warning oncoming traffic. Was there, I might have missed it. Was there signage specific to the police station? Any lit, or?
So here are our sign legend. I probably should have pulled that up before. Here are the pictographs. That's the fires, fire station ahead and the police station ahead. They reference the federal standard. These are the, so they will be yellow diamond signs with black images.
Yeah. Those are the traffic ones. Okay.
Yep. And then most of the other signage here that I have, of course, are, are the traffic relating signs.
Okay.
The only other formal signage that we have, trying to get to the architectural plans now, is building mounted.
Okay.
There we go. And there it is there.
That's it, okay.
So we're, we're making, we're putting conduit out to the front, the front lawn area between the public parking and the apparatus bay for the fire station. And that conduit will be, will probably pull wire. And the goal is for the town to undertake a message board that will also say Public Safety Facility. But that's going to be undertaken by the town. It's not part of the construction prog-
Okay.
-project.
Okay, no, that sounds good. And the, that's it for me for signage. The two entrance, the two ways in are both entrance and exits, right? And one is not an entrance, the other's an exit?
Yeah, so they are in fact both entry and exit, but the fire apparatus one will have signs authorized entry only.
Okay.
So the goal is, we don't want anybody that's not supposed to be responding to a fire incident coming into the site. So we know that call firemen will be looking for apparatus exiting and responding to a scene, and they'll take the appropriate care. But we don't want the general public anywhere near the apparatus. So that's got two signs. And if you want, I'll try and get to those signs again. Five sheets up. No, okay. No, okay. Here we go. So it's the standard do not enter.
Okay.
And then then it has a plaque underneath authorized vehicles only. So that's the red and white sign do not enter with black text and then authorized vehicles only. And that will be at the apparatus right at the junction with um Main Street.
Mm hmm.
And then it will be at the choke point just to the north of the Easterly driveway. Uh so that that's police officers and firemen and whoever has the reasonable and responsible reason to be behind the station. Ideally, the civilians should only be in that front parking lot and that front Easterly driveway. And everybody behind the building has a reason to be there.
Is that um for the entrance for the police side, not into the um not into the quote unquote private area, but the main entrance off the street? Um is that a two um two vehicle wide or?
Yeah, it's twenty twenty-four feet.
Twenty-four feet.
Thirty foot radiuses.
Okay.
Uh Mass DOT just made us increase the size of the radii.
I'm thinking of all those lovely people that are going to do U-turns.
Yeah.
So, okay. And let's see. Lighting, it looks like you covered sufficiently, I'm fine on the lighting plans. Um. Okay, I think those are my main questions because you covered, we're not billing on the um the overly district side, so I think we're fine there.
No.
That's it, okay.
Trisha?
Okay, so bear with me, my questions are a little bit all over the place. Um I didn't condense them by topic, so bear with me here. Um the walkways, are they paved pathways, part paved walkways or gravel?
They're concrete.
Concrete, okay, and I I'm assuming it meets ADA standards?
It does.
Okay. Um just for planning board members, um six three four specifically says we need to approve um the walkway treatments. I don't know if we need to discuss that at a later date, but just so we keep that in mind. Um with respect to storm water. Um so you ran the hydro cad model for the two, the ten and the hundred year storms. Um we you you mentioned that the site plan currently does not include a garage, but there is the potential for a garage to be included pending um budget. Um was the gar- so and if the garage is not included, then that area would be grass. Was the garage included as, was the garage included in the model or was grass included in the model?
The garage.
The grass was, so if we add.
The garage.
Oh, the garage, okay, so the garage was, okay.
We designed for the full build and if it doesn't happen, then the drainage system will work better.
Okay, all right, great. Um how about, and so and then you mentioned um a carport, so but I guess that actually wouldn't change because that area is already impervious, so the carport doesn't really matter, okay.
Right.
Um. All right, great, we talked about twenty-five year storm, um. Sorry, I'm just flipping through all my notes here. There is a lot to go through.
Yeah, it was a lot to pull together.
Um, okay, so if you go to the narrative on page four of fourteen of the stormwater analysis, um the first paragraph, there's something missing and I I I I'm assuming that that was meant to say there is also a sediment for bay or or is there something else that needed to go there?
What number?
Um page four of fourteen, narrative proposed conditions, paragraph one.
Page four.
In the drainage report?
Yeah, the stormwater analysis.
Oh, the stormwater, not the not the.
Oh, sorry, yeah, stormwater analysis.
Four fourteen, there it is. Close conditions, there is also a. Well, it does say sediment for bay constructed wetland detention basin, so I think that's the only thing that's missing. BMPs utilized.
Yeah, okay, okay, so it is the sediment for bay, okay.
Yeah.
Um. All right, um so we're go- um so we're expanding the fire building, the fire station building, and we're removing one building?
We are removing a little outbuilding, yeah.
Okay, but then, but I think it was noted that there was actually three buildings, so what's happening with the third building?
So if you, can you see my screen?
I can.
Okay, so the existing fire station is remaining and just being slightly upgraded. Directly behind it is a garage building that's remaining. And there there was where we show our, well, to the left of that, there was a outbuilding that's concrete block that the town is going to remove independently. And then we're simply adding the new building on, so there will be three built, if you consider it three buildings. It's actually two buildings now, the new addition and the existing fire station and the outbuilding behind the fire station, which currently houses some fire apparatus and that's staying.
Okay, great, thank you. Alan asked the question about one point one increase. Um so the land uses with higher pollutant load, is this not? Um is this is not a land use with higher pollutant load, is that correct?
It is not, yep.
It is not, okay.
We we just know, we don't have enough, so a luple is land use with higher pollution potential potential load. Um easier to say level uh is a uh trucking terminal, a truck repair facility, a very large parking lot, a transit lot, anything with a high volume of vehicular traffic. Um and we, of course, don't even meet fifty vehicle trips a day out of this project. Uh the so we we're not a trucking facility. Uh and to to address water quality, something I did not mention. Because uh apparatus is going to be stored inside a building. Currently, what happens is it, there's a floor drain inside the fire station, which goes to a dry well, which discharges to the local groundwater table. And that's not allowed. What will happen here is we're going to have floor drains again, but it's going to go to a sand oil grit separator. And then it's going to go to a tight tank, so anything that falls on the floor inside the building where any of the vehicles can be, so it would be the fleet garage or the fire station, the apparatus base. It would be the Sally Court for the police station and the two new garage bays. All of the floor drains there go to a tight tank. And the tight tank captures that water and holds on to it and then it gets pumped by a septic collar and haul to a wastewater treatment plant because it's considered non-hazardous industrial waste. So it's a, we're going to do a dramatic improvement on the impact of localized groundwater table by doing that. Uh but no, we're not a land use with higher pollution potential and, you know, if a fire truck is leaking, it's going to leak inside the building and it's going to then be captured by this this containment system. And if it's leaking, I presume that the chief will immediately get that fixed. Um in addition, maintenance won't be conducted inside any of these buildings on any of the vehicles.
Okay. Um so you met, um how many trucks do you anticipate during construction and what's the length of construction?
Uh it's twelve months. And I I can't really tell you how many trucks, usually on a project of this size, they'll have five or six dump trucks hauling surplus materials out um when they get into it and they will be doing a continuous cir- circle route. They'll load the truck, the truck will go to the DPW, they'll dump it, the guy will come back and by that time another truck has been filled. And they'll do a circle route, so it would be anywhere probably from three to five trucks hauling. And then, of course, you're going to have a lot of the uh construction workers in their private vehicles. And that will be a mandate on the general contractor to produce a staging area where they can safely park their cars. And not, excuse me, and not impact the neighbors or anybody else, we're not, they're absolutely not going to be allowed to park on Main Street because the Mass DOT won't allow that. So the contractor is probably going to have to develop a staging area um for the construction vehicles and none of the the construction vehicles are going to be allowed within a hundred feet of the wetlands. Uh none of the construction vehicles can stage on the the septic system area. And they cannot stage inside the drainage basin because we don't want compacting the soils. And all of that's in the bid spec, it's spelled out that they cannot use those areas. So the contractor is going to have to make sure he adheres to those requirements and works his way around. He's going to have a little bit of a challenge because the fire station will remain in operation throughout a- all phases of this uh construction. Uh there may be a a couple of weeks and the chief can probably address that better where the fire department during good weather can move out if they're going to do some interior changes, but that fire station is going to remain active throughout the majority of all the construction.
Right, have you met with Mass DOT and are they going to require any specific TMPs during construction?
TMP?
A traffic management plan? The traffic management measures?
I have submitted to Mass DOT and they have given us review comments, as a matter of fact, I'll be out on the site uh doing site distance measurements tomorrow. And we do have a traffic mitigation plan submitted to them. Uh but we're only doing shoulder work and the only work that we're doing is sock cutting to uh make our Easterly driveway connection and then sock cutting to do our gas line connection, so we're only on a shoulder. Uh so the traffic management plan is pretty straightforward. Uh the contractor was going to have to pay for a police detail. And for the short period of time mandated, it's no more than five days. Uh holidays and weekends excluded, they have to complete all their work in the Mass Highway Layout. So we'll have a police detail, hopefully it won't be a day or two. And they'll probably have a half lane closure. But the answer to the question is yes, we we have submitted to Mass DOT a traffic management plan.
Okay. Okay, we talked about inspection of the stormwater basins. Um. What kind of warranty are we asking of the contractor with respect to the stormwater um system? If any?
Yeah, no, uh there there is a warranty which is really, we uh we are requiring that the contractor hire a land surveyor and that the land surveyor give us an as-built plan of the storm at the entire site, not just the stormwater. But they give us an as-built plan of the entire site as-built stamped by the PLS. And that way we can, what my office will do when we submit to the Conservation Commission is we'll take that information developed by somebody else and we'll run it through our hydro cad model to make sure that it works as designed, and if it doesn't work as designed as both Tony DeLuzio and John McMillan can tell you. Um we just did a project in West Boylston where they did not do it properly and we had to, at the very, very end of the project, they had to dig it up and do it again because we weren't going to sign off on it. So unless it meets reasonable construction tolerances, uh we're obligated to certify that what they built meets what we designed under the weapons protection act from the Stormwater Quality Standards. And if you want to add a criteria as part of site plan, that's fine too. So we will be running our our model through another person's certified survey uh before we ask the the Conservation Commission to sign off and release us from uh their permit requirements.
Okay, um so you mentioned, so you mentioned that the groundwater table is about two to three below um existing contours.
Yes, very shallow.
Yeah, so what are your plans for dewatering or are you leaving that up to the contractor?
No, the dewatering is specified in the in in the documents and we give the contractor, number one, we give them copies of all the test holes. And we have a, I think it's a thirty-six page earthwork specification. And we tell the contractor that groundwater will be shallow during part of the year. And he is responsible for dewatering. And then if you look at our stormwater maintenance plan, if I can get to that, we have details for, uh that's up. Yeah. Dewatering is covered here. Um the existing catch basins on Main Street are going to have what's called silt sacks, it's an insert, it's like an erosion control fabric that doesn't allow silt to get by. We have a temporary dewatering area and we show him him or her exactly how to do it and some other mechanisms that they have to utilize to do dewatering. So what they're probably going to do, there, we also have a third option that's not on the plan, but we refer to it. Um and it's called a silt bag, so when they're over by Main Street and there's no place to discharge to because they certainly can't discharge you know, silty water to Main Street, there you pump it into the silt bag, which is a glorified filter box. Um and it filters the water, it comes out, what goes in is cloudy, 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 but comes out is clean and that just runs down the street like any other runoff. Uh so we've accommodated the dewatering and we've given the contractor fair notice that uh groundwater is going to be shallow. We've given fair notice that the soils are what are known as Paxton fine sandy loam, which by the way is the state soil. And it's going to be very hard to work when it's wet. Uh so yes, we do put the onus on the contractor because he's responsible for means and methods. But yes, we give him a performance specification uh that he has to adhere to.
Okay. Did you say that you had a specific place where d- dewatering will be directed or discharged?
No.
No, okay. Um but that will be in your SWIP?
It will be in the SWIP and it can't be directed, directly directed to the wetlands, it has to no, the the short story is no silt laden water is allowed to leave the site. Water is allowed to see, leave the site, but silt laden water has to be filtered before it's allowed to leave the site.
Okay. Um so you mentioned that there'd be no vehicle maintenance in the buildings, but would there be, so I mean, but does that include like, you know, changing any fluids, any, would there be any vehicle washing on the site?
Vehicle washing, yes, because if a, now let the fire chief talk about maintenance, but vehicle washing, yes, because when they come back from a fire scene or a car accident or whatever, the silt and other things adhere to the uh apparatus and hat it, that stuff is sometimes hazardous. So it must be rinsed off the vehicle, what it'll do, it'll rinse off the vehicle inside and go into the floor drain holding tanks and that's where it will stay until it's pumped out. Um they may do, you know, clean washing out front like many, many fire departments do just to rinse off a vehicle, not in response, but certainly not after a hazmat scene. Uh I can't address what minor maintenance they will do, I'm I'm going to guess they'll fill their um windshield fluids and do some of those normal activities, but uh oil changes and and major heavy maintenance and repair. Chief Bustel, can you address that?
All right, um, on that type of the light maintenance, we do a lot of it in-house, so. We currently do do some oil changes on some of the vehicles.
Okay.
We have and we, we were planning on to continue that because it helps with uh, our maintenance costs.
You're going to capture that though and contain it?
That's what we do. We, we, we capture it, recycle it back to the place that we purchased it and um. We've been doing that right along and uh, we'll, but with the thought was to continue that. So any of the large vehicle repairs are sent out to a third party. We're currently working on a, hopefully an in-house maintenance. Program with the DPW, but that's still in its infancy. Uh, so I don't, I can't comment further because we really haven't even. Um, got that off the ground yet, but yeah, nothing, nothing more than the everyday maintenance, we call it. Because changing the oil is not a. Not a big job, you know, it's, it takes, it takes some time, but all the precautions are always in place and. The process is, is no different than if you sent it out to a place to have the oil changed. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Yep.
Um, so Bill, um, we talked a little bit about uh, the maintenance, um, and we talked about, you know. Having discussions by the town and, and DPW doing the maintenance. So I'm assuming that there's no, no requirement. No specific qualifications for the maintenance.
Uh, well, the maintenance, the, the SWIP and this maintenance plan that we have in front of you. Uh, outlined how often and what the triggers are that require maintenance, but. You know, cleaning out a catch basin requires a catch basin either clamshell or a vacuum. Um, cleaning out the silt. The silt out of a four bay requires a, a backhoe to get a foot or so of silt out of the, the four bay. Uh, they don't really need to reseed it. It will take care of that itself or it will silt up again. Um, so there really isn't a whole lot of uh, high-tech here purposefully. Uh, we try to keep it as low-tech as we can, you know, cutting along in the basin and cutting down the, the uh. The constructed wetland plants every year or two, two years. Is not, weed whacker will do it. So there's nothing high-tech. Um, involved in the maintenance and, and as long as somebody's eyes work, the triggers are pretty apparent.
Okay, thank you. Um. All right, so, sorry, just trying to find my next question.
Okay.
Uh, Jean, do you have any questions? Do you want to jump in while I'm looking?
Uh, no, I don't have questions, but while you're looking, I'll just update people. Um. I, for, for those of you who are still waiting to speak, um, I think that we'll continue this hearing until we're done. And the planning board has other business and I'm going to propose that we have a special meeting. Next week to deal with that business because I for one am not going to have any energy to deal with a floodplain bylaw.
I second your unspoken motion.
All right, so just rest assured folks that we'll, we'll have space for the public to comment tonight. And we will not, we will uh. Hopefully make it through this hearing and close it tonight and um. And we will meet in next week for deliberations decision and the rest of our agenda tonight.
Um, so I, I will, um. I will leave it there. I will close out my questions with that.
Are you sure Tricia? Because um, once we close the hearing, you can't, I mean.
So I, I do have um, like one or two comments, but um, maybe we should hear the comments from the public.
Okay. Yeah, um, Wayne, did you have any questions that you wanted to ask Mr. Associate Member? Or Jim?
No, I'm all sathes. You have a lot of questions.
This is your idea of a great night, Jim. I know that.
It is, it is.
A lot of very good questions.
I do have one quick, quick question.
Sure.
The, the handicap parking spot is, it's just one spot, correct?
Yeah, um.
By the door.
One spot and one unloading spot.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so wide enough for the unloading area. Okay, not a fake, a um.
There it is.
Okay. And is, it's, it's a level, you step out of the vehicle, it's level, is there, oh, you do have a ramp?
Yes.
Yes, okay, okay. Right, because it's, the building is slightly higher than um, yeah, okay.
We have, the ramps go up on either side to catch the sidewalks. We have a six inch curb where the cars face, et cetera, et cetera. But that's, it's a, that's a level landing and we specify in our grading plan. Uh, where is my grading? There we go. So you see that gray hatched area?
Mm-hmm.
So there's a note on this plan that says that gray hatched area, no slope shall be in excess of two percent in any direction. On a level landing or in the parking areas. And then the walk that goes to the front door, it shall have no longitudinal slope, cross slope of greater than two percent. And the path of travel shall be no greater than five percent. And then you can see I have spot grades that give them extremely detailed guidance. As to what the elevations need to be. For that accessible route and parking area.
Okay. And is that mostly limited to the front of the building? Because you said as a public safety facility, it doesn't necessarily require. Um, accessibility around. I know you said that there is some accessibility, but.
Yeah.
Could somebody?
Our sidewalks, nowhere do our sidewalks exceed five percent or have a cross slope greater than two percent. But um, in order to be a fireman or a policeman. Yeah, you can't have mobility.
Right.
Disabilities. So that's why the back of the house doesn't necessarily have to comply with those standards, but. Absolutely the front of the house where the public has the right to get into the building. Um, that has to comply.
Okay, and they're restricted anyway from going, mm-hmm.
And the back of. The back of the house is semi-secure, so you know, people shouldn't, unless they're escorted, they shouldn't be back there.
Okay.
Yes, uh, Terry, can you hear me?
Yep, I can hear you. Sorry about that.
Yeah, well, Bill was explaining, but there's also. The funding mechanism for this building will be a low interest loan from the US Department of Agricultural Rural Development Division. Which requires federal compliance with ADA. So in the back of the building, we do have accessible exits and entrances. You can see just behind the fire station. We actually have a ramp coming from the uh, new addition. And so we do have accessibility in other areas of this building because the federal government. Doesn't recognize that a fireman or a policeman um, could be temporarily disabled. Uh, and on desk duty or somewhere else and they still need accessible elements. So we do comply with that.
Is that the um, not necessarily that the police vehicles are fitted for somebody in a wheelchair, but. Are, is a Sally Port also um, I'm assuming in compliance?
It is.
Yeah, you could take a handicapped prisoner from a cruiser from the backseat and you could take them through the facility in a wheelchair.
Okay, okay. All right, so that answers that question and on a completely different note, um, just the last question on the landscaping piece. I was um, going back to the, the full list of, that you had for. Landscaping materials, the um, the wild. Um, seeds, et cetera. Where the, the sewage, sewage, septic area will have the um, the um. Um, just grass seeds. It, is the rest of the um, the wildflowers more along the perimeter?
It is, yeah.
Okay, okay. The full perimeter or is it as it abuts the um, left in the eastern, western sides of the property?
Well. Somehow it's not going to draw so little. Utility. Come on, Pan.
Is that a race button?
Yeah. How do I get the pan? Oh. So what you can't see, or, or maybe you can see, uh, I have lawn mix A, seed mix C.
Oh, okay.
The basin.
Yeah.
And then basin seed mix inside the basin. So we have delineations um, where we call out the various mixes. So seed mix C is the slope mix, which is for all intents and purposes, the wildflower mix.
Yeah. Okay, all right.
Wish I had a point.
That's as close as it sounds, it seems like you're going to get. I can see the eraser though, that's for sure.
Oh, you can?
I can, yeah.
Yeah, so seed mix C here, lawn mix there.
Yeah.
Uh, basin mix, lawn mix A. And lawn mix A is, is, it's the manicured lawn.
Yeah. Okay.
So we, we define that to the benefit of the contractor.
Perfect, okay. So this talks back to what Jeanie had asked about um, the ability to have insects. Attracted, if you will, to the area. Okay. I think that's it. If you need any milkweed, you're welcome to my property because we apparently have no problem growing milkweed.
Monarchs love it.
That's it from me, Jeanie.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um. I think, is it safe to open it up now? Okay, um, so I can't see everybody because there's, um, so I suggest. I don't know, like, do, can we, can you maybe?
You want to start sharing?
Screen share?
If you could stop the screen share, Bill, or I can stop it for you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Oh, look at that. Now I can see all these black dots. Okay, um, if anybody would like to speak, please uh, hit the um. Raise your hand motion thing. Or something, clapping, do something on your screen and I'll know it's you.
Looks like Kathy Christopherson has her hand raised.
Thank you. And Mark, it looks like he's there too. So Kathy, did you want to speak?
Yes, please. Um. Can you clarify for me? I believe I heard you say tonight the building will be principally heated and cooled with gas, which is not what you told the Conservation Commission?
If I may, uh, yeah, gas is a secondary backup fuel source. It's electric with um. Uh, P pumps. Uh, Bill was mistaken.
Yeah, that's what you told the Conservation Commission and tonight I heard principally heated and cooled with gas.
My bad. The architect knows better.
Thank you, that's my question.
Mark?
Yeah, I, I got a few questions.
Sure.
Um. Number one, what's the cost of this about right now? With the uh, garage on the east side and without the garage on the east side?
Here, John, that's for you. I don't know that answer.
I'll pass that to Tony.
Okay, passing, passing around the round robin. So it roughly the estimated cost of construction. Five point four million. With the. Two garage bays, which are add alternates. And those, I believe the alternate for those two garage bays was about ninety-seven thousand dollars.
So the total cost is five point two right now. For that whole. Thing.
Five point four for the estimated cost of construction.
Of the whole complex is what I'm trying to get at. What is the total cost?
Total project cost is.
Everything done, drive in.
Seven point four million.
And you're saying how much you got that without the garage? Uh, two hundred thou you said?
No, I said the two bay garage is worth about ninety-seven thousand.
So you can take another hundred thou off of that to save money if we needed to.
That's how the bid is set up.
So Mark, this is a site plan review, so if you have questions specifically around the site.
Yeah, I do, I do. I just wanted to ask what the cost.
No, I just wanted to keep you focused on the site plan review part of this.
Okay, the second question I have is on the east side where all that water is going to go. Um, to disperse, that's going to end up coming down behind all these houses. Um, how are you going to slow that water down? Because there's going to be a lot of water coming through there at one time when we have a big storm.
Yeah, that's the, that's the purpose of the detention basin. So. The detention basin holds the water and slowly bleeds it out.
Right, but what I'm saying is if we get a large storm. And the water is flowing for a long time, how are you going to stop the erosion at the end of the apron? Where the water is going to disperse down behind our houses?
Well, the, the water that comes out of that pipe, no matter what storm it is, flows at a pretty low velocity. Uh, and it goes through a pretty long, a fifty-foot long stone apron to spread it out. Uh, so it meets the stormwater quality standards. And, you know, part of those standards is that we don't impact the downstream of butters. And it's going to discharge to that dug ditch that goes to the fire pit.
Because uh, when it rains now, heavy storms, we get a lot of water that comes down through there and it backs up. So that's why I'm wondering, with more water coming, how are you going to slow that down?
Yeah, the detention basins slow it.
It will slow it.
Yeah, that, that, that's the point of the thing, yeah.
Um, the other thing is, uh, why do we need a water line from the elementary school to the facility?
We're not doing that anymore.
So there'll be no water line, you're not digging behind any of these houses or anything?
No, we're doing an onsite well, just a small well.
Okay, so, and what would be the warranty of the septic considering the water table so high?
Well, the septic's.
I, I, the septic is, it's above the water table, but it usually gets saturated sooner or later. And depending on how much of it is used.
This is a pretty small leach field because the flows out of this facility are, it's four hundred and forty-four gallons per day. Um, so it, that septic should, as long as they do the basic maintenance and pump those septic tanks. That septic should last a pretty long time. So what we found is. Soils like this, which are the Paxton fine sandy loams, they tend to last a little bit longer than some of the other systems which clog up fast. So that septic is what, four and a half feet above ground?
Yeah, you can see where the degrade is, if the freedom of the grade.
Yeah.
Just make sure of that, you know.
It's, it's got a very low flow over a pretty substantial area. It should be not an issue.
Okay, and um, are there any sidewalks that are going to be? From the road to the, you know, walking up that, that apparatus or safety wise, people walking out of there or around there?
No, the only, the only sidewalks go from the accessible space or the front public parking space into the. Facility because there are no sidewalks that exist on. Um, one nineteen right now, Main Street. So there's nothing for us to connect to.
Okay.
Mass DOT doesn't want somebody pulling up in front of the station while on Main Street. And stopping and getting out. They want them to get into the site and get out of the traveled way.
So there's not be any uh, kind of walking or anything for people walking down there. It's just unsafe.
Right, and there will be signs, no parking, no stopping along the front edge of the project where there aren't right now. Mass DOT is going to mandate that.
Okay, I think uh, you've answered my questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Mark. Anybody else? That's a very big silence.
Yeah, no, um, who has their hands?
Berta Flashman raised a hand.
There we go, thank you.
Big silence. Okay, sorry about that. Roberta?
Hi. Um, so you have an electric car charge?
No, um, again, Bill mentioned there's a lot of, there's a space for electric uh, car charger. Uh, we're required to do that by code. But we do not have an electrical car charger on that pad. We bring electrical and conduit out to that area. For a future device. So it's all laid out and planned for, but the device is not actually. So it's all laid out and planned for, but the device is not actually part of this project. It can be provided to the town through to the any future date.
Hopefully a grant, grant-funded type of thing.
Okay, um, it sounded like, uh, when Tricia was asking you about your de-watering system, and you were talking about running water through silt sacks and such and removing all this soap. But it sounded like after that, it was just going out into the street.
Somewhat.
Uh, will this be happening after mid-October?
Uh, probably not, cause that would create a, a potential frosting or freezing condition.
That's what I was worried about.
So water, water leaves the site now when it rains. But the water that leaves the site after de-watering can't be dirty water. It has to be clean water. So if he discharges some water to the gutter of the street, um, in a very minor way, then that's an allowed use. Uh, otherwise, he's gotta do de-watering basins interior to the site, which he will dig a hole, line the edge with, uh, probably straw bales or something like that. And then he'll fill that hole and he'll have to let that settle down and it will slowly either seep into the ground or across the, across the ground. Uh, but he's gotta get rid of the water in one form or another, and he's not gonna put it in a tank or he's gonna discharge to the ground surface after some sort of a treatment, so that there's no silt going anywhere. And he cannot use the drainage system as a de-watering basin. We don't allow that because he silt, he would silt it up. Uh, so what, the, the, the best way for him to do it is lots of little depressions that are controlled. Um, and likewise, he's gonna have to make sure that he's not gonna be able to open up a 200-foot-long trench and de-water it for days on end. We're just not gonna let that happen. He's gotta do it in small increments, so that he can control where the water goes and how much water goes wherever it needs to go.
Depending on the volume, he may need to consider a frac tank and then slowly discharge from the frac tank.
That's a possibility. Uh, those, those silt bags that I mentioned are pretty much just a frac tank. It's the same kind of thing. It's a, it's a filter fabric, you surround it by straw, and it just slowly seeps and weeps. And when it gets full, you have to stop pumping and you have to deal with it. Usually we use a frac tank, um, when we have contaminated waste. But how this guy's gonna achieve that is, number one, subject to review and approval, but we're not telling him, you're only gonna do it this way. We're telling him, when you de-water, this is the end result. And you will present that to us so that we can agree that you're gonna meet our need. So that, I'm not gonna tell him, you can only do it this way, because that'll increase costs. If he has another way of doing it means and methods. Um, we're obligated to let him, uh, explain some sort of methodology for his de-watering system. One thing I'm trying to say very crystal and clearly, de-watering is gonna be a big deal on this site. He's gonna have to pay attention to it, and so are we. We're not pretending that it's not a big deal. It, it, it will be a big deal, but only for part of the year, cause we've already done test holes out there. We did test holes in January, we did test holes in February, test holes in March, we did test holes in June. I think we even did them in July. So the groundwater after the spring melt goes down pretty, pretty fast. So hopefully by May, groundwater's down five, five feet. We know for sure that come June, groundwater's down more than seven feet. So it's got a pretty good migration from either two or three feet below finished grade to more than seven feet when we hit the summer. And our last test holes were uh, at the beginning of the drought, not at, not in the middle of the drought of last year. So we're pretty comfortable saying, we know it's a perched water table that drops um, later on in, in summer and spring. So he's gonna have, he or she, the contractor, are gonna have to take that into account when they do their scheduling and their planning. Cause it's gonna cost them a lot of money to properly de-water. And if they delay, that's to their benefit, cost-wise, but it affects their schedule.
Who's the contractor? Sorry, go ahead, Roberta.
Well, I didn't hear you mention, and you mentioned to us, and I just wanted to make sure that you're gonna surround the catch basins at the front of the construction with sandbags, so nothing goes down there from de-watering.
No, they have, uh, silt sacks in them. So a silt sack is an insert that catches, allows clean water to flow through, but it catches silt, sediment, and debris. Uh, so the water that flows into the catch basin is clean. And then they, they pull those silt sacks up on a regular basis. You're not supposed to, you can reuse them once. Um, and then you have to replace them. What a lot of contractors do is they put filter fabric underneath the grate. And we don't allow that. That, that's, that's, somebody comes along and pokes a hole in it, and then, then it just becomes a silly thing. So, uh, that's what's up front. We can't use, um, sandbags in the right away, because they're a vehicular obstacle, but these silt sacks actually sit in. And, uh, they work very, very well. And that's what D O T is gonna tell us we need to do. So then at the end of the project...
Those need to be checked after every storm.
Yeah, that's part of the...
Or frequently.
Right, that's part of the SWIP. Um, at the end of the project, we've written into the specification that the contractor has to flush, he has to clean all the catch basins that, new and old. And he has to flush the drainage system in such a manner that he's not gonna silt up the detention basin, so that when the town inherits the drainage system, it's clean and it's ready to use and no maintenance is required.
And nothing from the flush goes out to, to, uh, to the brook?
To the brook, no. If it, if discharge happens to the brook, then it's gonna be hundreds of feet away and it's gonna have plenty of time to travel. And again, nothing leaves any of those drainage de-watering basins unless it's clean water. So we'd have clean water just simply flowing down the hill. And that would happen. You wouldn't do, you, you can't de-water in the middle of a, you know, some, summer thunderstorm or, or when the precedent condition is soaking wet already, you just wouldn't be able to do it.
And one last one, um, if vehicles are being washed, is the water going into the front catch basins?
They're going into the slot drains. There's slot drains before you hit, um, Main Street. And then they discharge to that little, with the apparatus slot drain will discharge to that little basin in front of the parking lot. And the other slot drain from East Philly Drive will discharge to the second basin, which has the constructed wetlands in it.
Ultimately, where does that go?
That goes into the constructed wetlands and then out to the brook.
So all vehicle washing ends up out in the brook?
No, ideally, all vehicle, certainly, all vehicle washing after a response has to occur inside the building. Because you presume that the vehicle after a response has some soot or whatever, and that can't be allowed to release into the environment. The, the type of washing that happens outside in the front door is usually just rinsing off the vehicle so that it can polish it. It's not car washing. And certainly not, you know, these, these are questions more for the chief than for me, because that's how he does it. Um, but certainly, if they do a response, like the big fire that they had uh, next down over, that, that, that kind of car washing or soot or a car accident where, where something happened, those kind of things have to be rinsed into the floor drain holding tanks, because that's potentially hazardous materials. And likewise, you know, even the firemen, they need to clean their equipment and that, that needs to be done in a conscientious way.
I think those are my questions. Thank you.
I see Kim Clinton's hand up.
Hi, uh, yes, thank you for your time. I just had a quick question, um, about the flow for the septic. Um, did you say that was 440 gallons?
Four, four, four.
444 gallons, okay. Um, could you tell me how you arrived at that number?
Sure. Um, well, what we did was Title V gives you, Title V is the state sanitary code or environmental code now. Um, Title V gives you loading rates for, uh, various uses. Uh, so what we did is we sat down with the Noshova Board of Health agent, and we did a calculation saying, okay, we have this use here, we have this use here, and therefore generates this amount of, of wastewater. Uh, we've been doing public safety facilities for 30 years now, and half of them are on septic systems. So this isn't something that we haven't, this isn't something we've created a, a new. Uh, most of the operations that occur inside of a police station and a fire station are administrative, so they're very similar to an office space. Um, a cell, we consider it to be half a bedroom, because you, a bedroom under Title V says that two people, uh, can cohabitate in the bedroom. But in a cell, you're not allowed to have two people in a cell, so we take half a bedroom. Uh, we have meeting spaces in here, we have some lockers, all those kind of things. So we took the floor plan and we presented it with the calculated loading to the Board of Health Agent. Um, and he and his supervisor over at Noshova's Board of Health agreed with our assessment of what the design flows were. And that was, uh, actually, the way Title V works is you get a flow and then they double it for design. So the average daily flow was 222, but for design purposes, we double it to 444. And that's the flow that goes out to the septic.
Um, could you just be a little more specific about how you came to that, uh, the flow? Um, you mentioned, you know, half of a cell or a cell is half of a person. Um, how many other people did you account for in that, um, flow rate?
Well, we accounted for the office use, so we took the square footage of office use. And that's a very standard way of doing it. You take square footage, uh, square footage of office space. Uh, I don't actually remember what the phone number is. Somebody's got some backbeat going on.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. I was just wondering, um, so it's not based on the number of people, it's based on the number of square feet?
It depends, well, Title V gives you a variety of methodologies to do it. For office space, it's based on the average occupancy uh, according to the building code, and it's based on square footage. Uh, at one point, there was a large meeting room in this building, and we had to base the flow on the occupancy of the number of seats in that meeting room. That meeting room's been pulled out of the calculation, cause it affected the flow too much. So we, we use Title V criteria, which are pretty spelled out, what, what you can and can't use and, and how you calculate the flows. Um, and that has been reviewed by the agent for the Board of Health as being a reasonable assessment of what the flows are gonna be.
Okay, so it's not based on the number of police officers working at that time and the number of employees? Um, you know, police op, you know, whoever's working at that time? Um, or the average number of people working, uh, during a specific shift? I thought it was like 150 gallons per person per day?
Oh, well, it isn't, no. The, the short answer is no, we didn't, we didn't use that methodology. And the other part of that is, um, you know, for policemen, they're not present at the facility throughout their entire shift, so they don't necessarily use all of the facility. But we use the, the requirements of Title V, so the code, in order to do that. And we got peer reviewed by the Board of Health agent. We haven't actually been in the Board of Health. Um, and, and they're, they're fine with the way we calculated it and the numbers that we derived.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Other questions?
That's some really good questions tonight.
I don't see anything else. Um...
Nothing in chat either.
Okay, Terry, do you wanna just, um, if Sergio's iPhone and Ashby1767 could uh, identify their names, so we can add you to the list of participants?
Yeah, Sergio Long, we brought...
Did you get that, Terry?
Yep, Sergio Long.
Thank you.
Thank you. And Ashby1767?
They probably fell asleep.
Ah, I'm not that boring. Maybe, maybe I am.
So, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Alan. Um, once everybody who wants to speak has spoken, we are able to close the public part of the hearing, which means that nothing else will get added to the record.
Um, I, I, I can't, I'm, I'm allowed to give clarifying material to a topic that was addressed.
Right.
But, yeah, no, no new topics can, can be...
No new topics, right.
So, so then I'd like to bring up a topic.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, under section 881, public hearing, it says, unless the original site plan approval specifically allows certain modifications or alterations without the necessity of a new public hearing, all requests for amendments shall require a new public hearing to be advertised and conducted in accordance with these rules. So I think we should contemplate allowing for minor modifications without having to have a new public hearing.
Would this include the waiver or the, um, what did we agree on?
No, so, so let's just say, um, places and, and the team developing, developing our plans and working with the contractor come up and the contractor says, well, you know, all the contractor bids come back and say, well, I need to do this. I need this much extra space.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that's not currently shown on the plans. Um, if it's a real minor modification or even perhaps like a field change, I, I think we want to allow for that without having to go back out to public hearing.
Entire process, yeah.
Yeah.
That's very normal, yeah.
Yeah, so, so that would be part of the decision, uh, Tricia?
Yeah.
But didn't we have to discuss it here, though, to make the public aware of that? I don't know.
No, that, uh, we'll, we'll go into deliberations and we can make that part of the decision.
Okay.
I agree. But you did raise it, so that was well done.
Thank you.
That would be our question. Alright, so we can close, we can close the hearing to public comment and changes. And then we will, uh, deliberate at our next specially scheduled meeting.
Can I make a suggestion?
You sure can.
Can you close the public hearing with the understanding that the applicant will amend their waiver request?
Oh, if you want us to do that, we are happy to do that.
Yeah, to include the stormwater one, yeah.
Yeah, the 25-year storm, right. And then that, the, there's no ambiguity. It's a defined topic. We talked about it during the process, and it's more clerical than anything else.
Hey.
So that's closing a public hearing, um, but also allowing for...
The smittal of the waiver for stormwater.
Formal smittle of the stormwater waiver as discussed during the public hearing.
Okay.
Just my request. I don't get to make the motion.
I was gonna second.
Who's gonna make that motion? Tricia?
Okay, I make the motion.
Okay.
We close the public hearing and comments, but we allow for the applicant to file the 6.1 waiver for two 25-year storm.
As discussed during the public hearing.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Uh, Jim, second to that. Terry's still writing, so we're just gonna wait for a minute. Is it ready? Okay.
No, 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 Terry, not ready.
Yet.
Okay, just a little bit of a clarification. Closing a public hearing, allowing for formal smittle of waiver of stormwater as discussed during public hearing. Um, 6.2? 6.2? Yep, 6.2.
No, six point one.
Six point one?
Six point one, correct.
Six point one, yeah.
Six point one. Why do I have six point two written down?
Just wanted to.
I'm telling you, I'm just adding it up, Jim.
Yeah, there you go.
Yeah, six point one. Okay, I'm all set. Thank you.
All right, so we've got a motion and a second. Uh, Alan?
Aye.
Jim?
Aye.
Genie, aye. Tricia?
Aye.
Terry?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This has been really instructive and beautifully presented. I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You guys are, you guys have very, very good questions.
Thank you. We are actually modestly competent.
Agreed.
Don't let me get out.
So, um, so that's, that's it. We're going to have, um, a meeting. Can we have a meeting next Wednesday night, board? We will notify, um, the applicant. I don't know. Do we notify you, Bill? Do we notify, uh, Bob? I mean, who are we supposed to notify of our?
Uh, we don't have to.
We don't have to know.
We don't have to notify anyone, anyone that's interested is here. And if you're proposing March seventeenth, do you have a time?
Um, seven o'clock.
It's St. Patrick's Day.
Yeah, we're not.
That's so exciting. We can all come in.
No, no.
Are you not around, Terry?
We're eating.
You're eating. So do you want to meet later or not at all?
We can do, we can do, um.
You could just turn off your video and eat.
Nah, you'll eat with me. I'll turn on my video. So seven or seven thirty, I'm fine.
Uh, Tricia, it's a, can you, do you want to put it off till seven thirty or do you want to stick with seven?
Uh, let's do seven.
Okay.
All right, so we will uh, meet again at seven o'clock on Wednesday, the seventeenth of March. Alan, you're not muted.
Yeah, I'm saying yes to Lorraine who's telling me that I have to remember this day.
Thank you, Lorraine. All right.
March at seven, okay.
And we will take up the other agenda items. I'll get a, I'll get a new agenda posted this week.
Okay, hearing closed at nine thirty-two is what I have.
Hey, Terry, if it's a different, if it's a different link or something for next week, can you email us or send it? Outlook invite or something?
Oh, you know what? That's a really great point because we're going to go back to our regular um, meeting link. So I will send that out to everyone.
Send it out to me and I'll make sure it's on the agenda.
Okay.
Do we have other business before we close that can't wait? Hallelujah, motion to adjourn.
Second.
Third.
Fourth.
Go.
Aye.
Let's go. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone.
Very much. And thank you to all the people who came tonight.
Thanks, Madam Chairman.
Thank you. Pretty cool, huh? Yeah, groovy.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See y'all later. Bye-bye. Yeah, y'all set, Terry?
I'm all set. I'm going to make up names as to who, uh, motioned and closed.
I don't think you need to even need to bother.
Awesome. All right, guys, thank you.
All right, great. Good night, everybody.
Night.